Couple of things, just so you'll know what might help you participate. And I want to make sure that you know those things and we can help you the best we can as you have to make your decisions. Most of you can see the name tags to identify the candidates. We have decided to get right into the questions tonight. We're ready for those rather than to have a lot of opening statements. Derek Donnell, and then Guido Manaya, Kathleen Morgan, Chris Quackenbush, Betsy Vaughn. And right there is a dividing line. Can you see it? There is a big gulf between Betsy Vaughn and Don Armstrong because there are two districts represented here tonight. District six and district seven. District six is on the right with Don Armstrong and Richard Dunmire. District seven is all them other rascals. I mean candidates. It's important to understand that because we as voters will elect a representative for the school board from each of those districts. So as you process the information tonight, you need to remember the separation there so that you get that straight. Those are also countywide seats. So the whole of Lee County would be voting on those candidates for office. So far, so good? All right, good. We do questions in a little different format than some forums and we take them from three sources. One source is your questions and you should have gotten a three by five card or cards. We have plenty and we'll be glad to give you more. And if you have a question that you would like to submit to the moderators, then please write that on that card. It's important to write it in the form that can be answered yes or no because we ask the candidates to respond yes or no to the questions that we pose. If you need help with that, I'll be in the back. I'll be glad to help you write the question down. Sometimes people know what they want to say but they can't get it said. We'll help you with that, no problem. A couple of us will be back there. But your questions are important. Southwest Florida Citizens Alliance also prepares a questionnaire and you probably got that. I hope you did as you came in. If you didn't, we'll pass out some. We've got people around who have them. Raise your hand, jump up and down, scream and holler, whatever it takes, we'll get you that. Because we want you to know those questions, we asked the moderators to choose from those questions. So there'll be a third questions from the audience, a third from that list, and we allow the moderators to choose a third of their own. All of the questions that are chosen are entirely the choice of the moderators. We as the Citizens Alliance do not make any effort to control what they ask. But all of your questions will be in that mix and they will be included in that. Now, on that question list that you have, you should have gotten two pages. We gave you two pages because there are two districts. And the idea is that you can follow along and in one column it says you, and you can write yes or no in terms of your position on those questions. And then when you hear a candidate answer that question, you can write that candidate's position so you'll know whether they agree with you or not, or whether you agree with them. There's also room for some notes and of course you'll want to do that as well. At the end of the forum, we will have a straw poll. Those straw poll ballots will be distributed about eight fifteen. We kind of try to watch the time about along that. We will distribute those and explain how we do the straw poll. So hang in there on all of that. You'll want to wait until you hear the candidates answer all the questions, make their final statements before you cast your ballot, but we want you to participate in that as well. We're really glad to have two moderators tonight with us. One you've already met, now he takes on a different role, but Pastor Jim Wigtin has been our host for a number of these things and tonight he's agreed to be a moderator. So we're really pleased to welcome him to do that. He has the distinction of all of the forums that the Southwest Florida Citizens Alliance has done. He is the first pastor to be a moderator.
Thank you.
We've recruited. I had to pinch hit for one one time, but I didn't count because I was pinch hitting. They've been willing to do that. The other moderator you may recognize is Michael Drycourt. Michael has participated in forums like this, only not in the moderator's seat. More than once, he has been in a candidate's seat and he knows the process of being on that side of it. Now he gets the joy of asking the questions. We're really pleased to have Michael join us tonight. The candidates will be entirely on their own from here on out at the direction of the moderators. Start asking your questions. We'll be by to pick them up anytime. All right, well, I'm going to start this off by straying just a little bit and allow each of the candidates sixty seconds individually to tell us who you are, what you stand for in principles, and what unique skill sets you bring to this position as a school board member.
Well, good evening, everyone. That kind of fell flat. I'll try again. Good evening. All right, hi. My name is Derek Donnell. I am here, I've served on the Capeport City Council for eight years. I am resident of Florida for 20 years. I can't stop smiling because my beautiful other half is right to my right. I've been married to her for 23 years. What I bring to the, to the school board, would like to bring is that collaboration and working together. All right? I understand the issues. I understand what it means to be an elected official and I understand, have a depth of knowledge that will be very helpful. What I would like to see, the goal and principle, is to bring the community along with the board together so we can serve in the best interest of our children. So tonight you're going to hear a lot of yes, no, that are really quick. Please stay by. The wife has given me permission that we can stay longer because there is some depth to every question they're going to ask us tonight. There's no way that I'm going to really be able to explain it to you in sixty seconds. I'm going to give you a brief summary. So please, if you have any questions, I'm here until, until you need me. So again, my name is Derek Donnell. I look forward to this evening to earning your support for district seven.
Good evening. My name is Guido Manaya and this serves both as a choir robe and as doctoral regalia. I'm here because I believe in education. I'm passionate about education. I'm passionate about learning. My parents were school teachers. They brought us to this country for one reason only, because the education system in the U.S. was the best in the world at the time. And although I'll never be able to repay them for their gift, I will be able to do as much as I can for our students and our children to also receive one of the best educations in the world. There's a lot that's missing, there's a lot that's lacking. And I believe my background in corporate education at the end of the pipeline will allow me to step back and look at early learning, elementary, middle, high school, college, and where there is leakage and provide my guidance along with the collaboration with the other school board members. Thank you very much.
My name is Kathleen Morgan and I currently sit on the school board representing district three and I am running for the at-large seat, district seven. I also am passionate about public education. I served on a school board in New York State and as a result of that experience, I went back to school and got my master's in ed administration. The reason I'm running is that, or the issues that I think are important are one called governance. We need to have a board that is willing to work as a team to fundamentally create a system of best practices that supports the superintendent in doing his job. I also believe that we need to operate with a strategic plan that focuses on the two most important challenges we face in the school district. One is English language learners. The second is English language literacy. I think we need to do a better job using data to fine tune the teaching and learning to meet the needs of those students. Third, I think we need to have a teaching and learning environment that...
Time.
Hi, I'm Chris Quackenbush and I'm here because our children aren't getting to learn what they need to learn. And our school has just come out with some new reports as of last week on the Florida FSA. It says that only 53% of our children are on grade level. Fifty-three percent in math, 54% in English. We are failing our kids. We can't do same old, same old anymore. We have to do something different. As for my background, I was poor, but I didn't know it. I grew up on welfare, but school saved me and that's why I need to do that for my grandowners too. We had freedom back then. We could climb trees, we could ride bikes, we could go all day long and come home with safety not in our minds. We can't do that today and that's a real shame. And part of that is because we have also neglected morality in our teachings, in the schools, in our homes. We taught it as it's a bad word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Betsy Vaughn and I recently retired from a 38-year career as a secondary language arts teacher. I spent eight of those years here in Lee County, the last eight years in Lee County. Prior to that, I was department chair at a large high school in a Dallas suburb. One of the reasons that I am here tonight is while I was teaching in the district, I saw some things that I thought could be done more efficiently, could be done better. I've devoted my adult life to education and, you know, as you listen to me this evening, there's probably going to be some of my viewpoints that you disagree with. However, I think that we probably would agree on things such as we need to have school board members who place the welfare of our children, is that?
Yes.
Can I finish the sentence?
Yes.
Of our children, our schools, and our community ahead of any personal or ideological agendas. Thank you.
Be sure also to turn off your cell phones if you haven't already done so.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank each one of you for taking the time out of your busy day to come here and listen to all the candidates. My name's Don Armstrong. I currently, I used to serve on the board for four years. The reason why I'm running again, I have two 11-year-olds who go to school still. I'm actually the only candidate up here who has two kids in school. So when I actually sit up there at that dais and I place a load, I think about my kids, I think about your kids. But one of the things I also think needs to be brought back to this school district is your voice, not the board member's voice, your voice, because we work for you. So that was one of the things I used to pride myself on because I would listen to the community and I would listen to everybody's concerns and opinions and bring it back to my colleagues. And that is what I vow to do this go around because I think it's important. I took the time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here and thank you for being here. I'm Richard Dunmire and I'm running for district six at large. That means that everyone sitting here, if you're registered, you can vote for me. I'm also a veteran of the military, but I'm also a veteran of the classroom. I'm a teacher. I've been teaching 57 years. I can bring some things to the board. One of those is education. And the other is that I chair the New Testament Baptist Church School and we just graduated class Thursday night. I also am a businessman. I also am a former general contractor and a land developer. I can bring all these things to the board. I've seen about 8,000 students. Some of you are right here in my 42 years here in Lee County. I see it's about to go. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, this question, we'll start with Richard Dunmire at the far end. That way you can pass the microphone back. I'm going to start with the yes and no questions that are printed for us and feel free to take a few seconds to clarify your answer. The question is, will you, you know, Common Core is an issue to some. Will you provide leadership for a Florida state initiative that allows school districts to select and implement pre-2009 standards and curriculum that are equal to or better than the Common Core standards and curriculum?
Absolutely. We need to come up with...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right, so everybody got to see the paddles. Paddles back up. All right. I'm sorry. Oh yeah, the first thing, everybody has to put your paddle up. So they know where they are in the position so that when they come back, they don't change their position based on the other person's.
Okay.
All right, can we proceed then? That's okay. Mr. Dunmire.
I'm not here to be real clear, I'm sorry. Would you ask any questions?
Okay. Will you provide leadership for a Florida state initiative that allows school districts to select and implement pre-2009 standards and curriculum that are equal to or better than the Common Core standards and curriculum?
Absolutely. I'm involved in Common Core. Anything that ever come out of Washington is not too good. And I've seen that over the last, I've seen that over the last 40 years here in Lee County. Anything they brought to us, wanted us to be part of, they had strings on it, held string. We end up with paying a whole lot of money if we implemented it. So, no, I'm all set to get rid of Common Core. I like teacher-made tests. I make them every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's actually a great question. As a lot of people here know, I was one of the board members a few years ago who stood up against our state, our federal government. But I didn't just stand up for my kids, I stood up for your kids. I don't believe the Common Core standards that we have today is going to benefit our children anyway. And I do say our children because they're all ours. I believe we have a lot of intelligent people, very well-educated people in this district and this community that we can turn to and come up with standards that's far better than Common Core. Thank you.
Well, you may have noticed that I was probably in the minority with the red, but there's one reason for that and one reason only. It's because the question qualified and said pre-2009. No, we don't need to go back to 2009. We're going to be in 2017 pretty soon. Do I support the Common Core? No, because the Common Core was supposed to be high standards and what happened with Common Core, instead it became centered around test. I think Lee County is doing the right thing with the balanced scorecard.
Well, I not only believe we should adopt those standards that were empirically shown to be the best standards ever. We can select from the best standards that have proven results. And I was part of a small team that went to Tallahassee to implement that in the form of legislation. And unfortunately, that didn't pass then and we will try again because our children deserve the very best standards such as the Massachusetts Miracle Standards from Sandra Stotsky. Dr. Stotsky, by the way, is coming in town July 19th and 20th, so mark your calendars. And please help us to eliminate Common Core and bring common sense, not Common Core, to our district.
I too answered no on the question because of the pre-2009 designation. I also support the superintendent's effort to create district standards that will enable our students to graduate ready for work and ready for college in a global economy. I think our students need to be, I think the standards that we set will be equal to or better than the Florida standards. And I would like to say that some of the naysayers who are being quoted about Common Core are actually people who have no issue with Common Core standards apart from the fact that those standards were not rigorous enough.
Yeah, very good question. And mine were a couple of issues. The pre-2009 standards, in principle, we are, as school board members, supposed to step back and evaluate the various inputs and then with those additional inputs, make decisions. As an example, globally, one of the best curriculums is the International Baccalaureate Program. There's other programs like the Cambridge Program, the AP Program. I would like to take a look at all of those, compare that to the 2009 standards. I'm also the, my doctorate is in higher education administration. When colleges make decisions on which students they're going to move forward, anyone that comes with one of those designations like IB or AP gets put in a stack and misses a few vetting processes. When you don't come with a recognized standard, you're in this big stack and you have to go through all the vetting processes. So I don't want our students to be disadvantaged if we get it wrong, if we don't evaluate it properly.
At the core of this question is where you've talked to me, there's a misunderstanding, all right? There's standards, the question itself talks about whether or not we're going to support having the best standards, to which everybody goes, well, of course. But I understand that there is a disconnect because there's a standards piece, then there's an instruction piece, then there's an assessment piece. And one of the things I'm bringing to the board is that we are very clear about what we're talking about. So when you saw my yes one of, it's because, of course, we're going to continue to evaluate as we always do to have the best standards. But along with that, you have to have the correct curriculum, which comes with a conversation with the community. And above all, where all of the confusion has come in with the high stakes testing. So I look forward to having, to continue that conversation.
Now, in response to this, just to remind everybody of the process, that the entire group will at one time show the paddle, hold it up for five seconds so everybody can see, and then we'll proceed back down the line. Everybody will have 60 seconds to respond. And as a point protocol, if anybody mentions somebody else's name in their response, that person who has been mentioned will have 30 seconds to respond to that. So remember, this is a forum, not a debate, but we're doing really good so far. Now, some of you are probably not aware, but the county of Lee has bet on an annual budget of about $3 billion, of which the school district consumes about 30% of that. So inherently in that, the leaders of that school district should bring certain business skills with them. Now, that being said, the question is, do you support the school board requiring a zero-based budgeting to include year-to-year line item analysis? So essentially a bottom-up budget. Thank you. Mr. Dunmire, start with you.
Here we are again. And understanding, and one of the things that I bring into, well, I don't have to start when I come to the school board, is the understanding of budgets. Certainly, when you hear a bottom-up, when you hear the terminology, if you look at the budget right now, think about a line item analysis. What that literally means is that you break out each cost by its cost factor or its cost factor center. You get that. On the second part, when you talk about a zero-based, what that literally means is that at the end of that quarter, at the end of the year, then what we have to do as a public sector is balance that budget. Interestingly enough, when you have these questions about budget, if you look at the rating of the school district's budget, it has been AA+ as we speak. So, but that doesn't get communicated. So before we go and start to change it, when you say to do, to implement a process that's been covered and has already satisfied at the end result that we're being fiscally responsible, then you're putting undue strain on the staff that you have and now we add another layer of administration. So this is one of those questions that I would love to continue. I want to have 40 seconds, but it is not as simple and easy as you think because we are there right now with the transparency and covering what the funds cover.
Thank you. Keep in mind that our timer's right there. Is the paddle's visible?
I've been a leader in learning organizations both regionally and Asia, Latin America, and globally. I've done zero-based budgeting. The issue, as Dr. Donnell mentioned, is that when you have a zero-based budget, you're deciding how many pencils do we need and what's our budget for pencils versus the larger decisions that we absolutely should be focusing on. I believe that the biggest decisions, like building a school and where we're going to get the funding for a school, that should be the focus of the school board. We have top professionals working within the school board. I would trust them to provide us the right information and I would trust us to ask the right questions to see if there's anything missing. And if we do find something missing, then we drill down and then we do zero-based budgeting on either that division or that department or that budget item.
I believe that there are two things that we can do. First of all, we conduct operational audits on a periodic basis. Operational audits tell us whether or not what we are doing is being done efficiently and effectively. The second thing I would do is every year or as program renewals come up, evaluate program, personnel, capital expenditures, operational expenditures, expenditures on expected outcome, and whether or not the goals were met and make a decision about whether or not we will continue to fund the staff, the programs, the capital investment over the operational investment.
I'm an absolute believer in zero-based budgeting. I think our taxpayers deserve it and I think there's a tremendous amount of waste that I have seen personally in our school systems. We're spending $55 million a year just on busing our kids hours and hours and hours, which can be changed. We are spending, we have budgeted $154,105,000 for only one thing, computer hardware. This is insanity and many programs now are showing us that, the research shows us that these should be replaced with books. Books work better than computers in many cases. We have to use our technology with a cost-benefit idea in mind. Is this expenditure for teachers not as valuable as this expenditure for computers? We have to weigh every expense. That's why zero-based budgeting is best.
Well, this was one of those questions where, and even though I'm not a wishy-washy person, I kind of wanted to wave, wave back and forth. The one thing that I see that's really important and what I believe in is that there's a difference between our needs and our wants as a school district. And one of the things that we can't get around is one of the needs of the school district, more student seats. We are growing by 1,500 to 2,000 students a year. We need to build schools to accommodate those students and we are already behind. I believe that I'm fiscally responsible because I don't like to spend money that we don't have and I don't like to be funding these new schools on certificates of participation, which are really credit cards. So I would say we need to look at everything.
About three years ago when I was on board, I brought this to the board. I asked for it and the response I got was, you know how big we are? We can't do that. I said, really? I said, in 1970, the whole state of Georgia did it. State can do it in 1970? Think we can't? The reason is, we have to start separating, like she said, our wants and our needs. That's the best way to do it. What do we need? Now, what we want, what we need, and what's best for our kids, what's best for the taxpayers' money. Because I continue to watch this taxpayers' money go out the window, but when we watch that taxpayers' money going out the window, that's our kids' education that's going straight out the window as well. And I think that it's important that we owe it to the taxpayers to continue to look at it. One of the things I'd like to see is to put a line item on the website so at any time, any one of you can get on there and see exactly where the money's being spent. Thank you.
I would behoove most of in this room just to write that figure, how many zeros? Million, we can understand. I work with million-dollar budgets. We need to find people that handle this kind of money. The CEO of the hospital, the CEO of Florida Power, like, these people are willing to come in and show us how to construct a budget that's worthy of that much money. I would like to start all over again, tear that budget up. The other day in one of my own companies, I found 50 boxes of paper. Said to the secretary, why do we have 50 boxes of paper? You know, we have online. She said, well, we always did it this way. And I said, well, we're going to change that. We can go to each department, scale down their needs, and assure them that if they have an additional need, we'll come up with the funding. But we need to have people there that can help us. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start again with Mr. Dunmire at the end. We'll come back this way. This question comes from the Southwest Florida Citizens Alliance, the pre-printed yes and no questions, plus two from the audience. Do you support the Obama administration's May 13, 2016 directive requiring schools to provide students access to transgender school restrooms and locker rooms consistent with their internal sense of gender? We'll start at the end. Thank you. Mr. Dunmire.
You heard me say that I'm a... You heard me say that I'm a military veteran. Can you imagine, in my class, someone sitting there while we give the pledge of allegiance? What a terrible, terrible thing to happen. Think of all those veterans, I do. They know that I'm a veteran. In my class, they stand. I don't mean that they have to salute the flag, that's okay. Any country that I've ever been in, Japan, Korea, Canada, when that flag is out, I don't salute it, but I certainly stand. That's the least it can do. And of course, on the bathrooms, I can't even think of where that's going to go. I only have one solution, a new president. We'll be sending one.
Keep in mind, the question was about providing access to transgender, transgender school restrooms and locker rooms.
I'm not going to agree with him about the new president, but hey, you know, here's my take on this. As a parent, no, absolutely not. But as a board member, and as somebody who wants to represent you guys as my constituents, the federal government has no right, none, to come in here and tell this district, you do what, my kids, your kids, your grandkids, what and how we can do it. This district belongs to us, and they have no say-so in it. And we need to continue to stand up to them and tell them, stay out of our business. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to approach this as a state's right issue, and I absolutely support the right of a transgender individual to use the restroom that he or she, that he or she...
Lower to finish this.
You know, here's the thing. There are some people that talk about bullying. Bullying is, for some people, when somebody that you agree with is treated poorly. If you do not give rights to the transgender students, you are bullying those students, and you are opening them up to, you know what? I said at the beginning, you may not agree with what I believe, and I knew that coming here.
Thank you very much.
But I'm going to say what I feel.
Thank you very much.
Well, I agree, it's bullying, but it's the wrong direction. We have bullying coming from the federal government, and we have to stand on the walls for our children, because this bullying extends to all of this educational brouhaha that we have with Common Core, high-stakes testing, sex education, all of this, that is diverting our children from learning what they need to learn in order to...